"Why No Knowledge Of An Employee Dismissal?" Vision Press Production News Media. On February 1st, 2024 at 7:00 PM, the Irvona Borough Council held their regular meeting to conduct the business of the borough. The Borough Council chamber was full with the public surrounding the council table. For three months, a sensitive issue has been a concern of the residents of Irvona Borough. There has been no answers. On the agenda was the name of Mrs. Mona Dubliler listed under the title "Public Comments." "Why Was This Employee Fired? I have 400 signatures and we have not received any answers. What is the answer?" In the meeting, Ms. Dubliler wants the President of Council Daniel Smith and TIMA Chairman Thomas Brink to do something like reinstate the dismissed employee. Logistically, TIMA Chairman Brink cannot make a motion and he cannot second a motion. He is the chairman of the Irvona Municipal Authority. The official proper name of the corporation registered in Harrisburg Commonwealth Government is the Irvona Municipal Authority (TIMA). In the meeting, the Honorable President read into the record the following from the Pennsylvania Manual for Municipal Secretaries, Book Page 1. The section on the page was entitled "Dismissal From Office." Municipal secretaries, as public officers not under civil service, may be dismissed by the governing body for any reason and at any time. Article 6, Section 7 of the Pennsylvania Constitution provides appointed civil officers may be removed by the power by which they shall have been appointed. Such removal may be without cause, as well as without notice. Protections of the local agency law do not apply to appointive offices held at the pleasure of the appointing authority where the employee has no expectation of continued employment guaranteed by contract or statute. Goffby Borough of Norristown, 444-82D-839, 66 PA, CMWLTH 401, 1982. According to the Honorable Board of Directors for the Irvona Municipal Authority, Incorporated with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania in September 16th, 1954 with file number 0000174716. The Honorable Directors must remain constitutionally silent. The TIMA has no comment. Ms. Donna Morrison alleged another date that is not in compliance with the official incorporation. Ms. Morrison purported allegation concerning the Irvona Municipal Authority without any proof of her claims. The Irvona Municipal Authority is not without incidences that caused an uproar. In March 6th, 2017, in an Order Number 1709, a TIMA board member was convicted due to her violation, violated Section 1103(a) of the Public Official and Employee Ethics Act 65 PAC.S1103(a), when, in her capacity as a member of the Board of the Irvona Municipal Authority, Clearfield County, Pennsylvania, she motioned and voted for an increase in compensation/wage for her brother, removing (named employee), replacing (named employee) with her brother, named in the court order. The consent agreement (convicted violator) is directed to make payment in the amount of $1,000.00. So, the TIMA has had past problems that resulted in legal actions. What would happen if the Honorable President of Council for the Borough of Irvona as well as being a member of the Borough of Directors of TIMA, say he would make a motion to reinstate a dismissed employee and the TIMA Chairman would second the motion as Ms. Dubliler had suggested she wanted? Would there be an ethics violation? Vision Press Production News Media holds to the conclusion that the President of Irvona Borough and TIMA Chairman are most honorable men and would not violate moral and ethics standards in the Irvona Municipal Authority business and practice. Ms. Dubliler does have the constitutional right to seek inspection of TIMA records other than personnel records. The Act of February 14th, 2008, PL 6, Number 3 in Act, known as the "Pennsylvania's Right To No Law," RTKL, and if Ms. Dubliler is denied inspection of records, she may appeal to the Office of Open Records (OOR) for an officer to determine her case. Ms. Dubliler should be commended for her extraordinary compassion for a citizen employee who was dismissed from a secretarial position. A paradox of events that will have no conclusion unless the dismissed employee goes to court; then the matter becomes public with claims and counterclaims, lawyer fees, court costs, and physical strange pains that one never thought possible. The law is the law and our opinion die at the bench in the Honorable Court. For the dismissed employee, she is talented, smart, knowledgeable, and can with the Almighty's gracious hand can grant to her the best job she could not imagine. Vision Press Production News Media hopes the 400 individuals who signed a petition will pray for the dismissed employee respectfully. Vision Press Production News Media. All videos for the area are found at http://www.wkies.com Click on the name of the playlist you desire. Thank you for viewing the Vision Press Production News Media video presentations.
Do you have the doctor sign up for you?
No, no. I think I have something else that's going to come out.
Oh, okay. Excuse me. Thank you. That's a $4 cap mark to get on the ballot. I think that's what you need. You gotta let the fire now sit down. Here's your rest. Two chairs over here. Hot door up there.
You guys can sit better and I'll go over here. It's it.
Two chairs here.
And one down here. Plus, it's comfy.
Is it? Door closed. It's running. It's running. Make sure nobody knocks it over. Hello, hello.
Hello.
Hey, Sammy. How you doing? I'm supposed to say all stand. The residence here. Good puncher. What do we scrap, right? What do we scrap? Get some puncher.
You could use all the time. So you're returning. I don't know. I don't know David. I don't know David's coming.
You want to give a joke? Yeah. That wasn't the oldest. Heard you got the bail equity out. Some sorts. That boy will never learn. Yeah. Probably this time it's not going to be so easy for him.
Yep.
You coming tonight?
Um, I don't know. I'm not sure.
Is America?
Yeah. They're supposed to be. There's two seats back there if anybody wants to sit on them.
Why you going? It's not a stranger. Mona, you might have to fire company goes first so we can get them out of here in case they get a call. Jared, you mind if fire company goes first?
Are you going to have an executive session?
No, 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 no. I have underneath my mayor's thing but just to get them out here in case they get a call.
Mr. Mayor, you've called.
Got a pen hammer.
I can get your number.
I don't have a workshop, work for, work for the ones that I'm gonna help me tonight.
There you go.
Thank you. How many you need?
I'm not having any because I have a lot already. I just want to make sure I have enough.
Yeah? No, no, it's still.
She's standing.
Yes. You standing?
Yeah.
I will find a seat. I'm going to chase them.
There's two of you sat here.
Wants information. Go back here, ma. Huh? Go back here.
Okay.
Good evening.
Sorry, what's that?
Sixty-eight.
Not feeling well. Dark cold.
Compliments to the queen that's here in 1991. I'm just going to give this to him.
Oh.
I'm going to hang him in here. I mean.
I know. We all know.
You know how I do.
This is our prayer ready. I pledge allegiance to the Lord and the United States of America in the name of his majesty the lord of all existence, one nation, one empire, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I bow down. I pardon heaven. I know we have a name that can even come. And that will be done on earth as it is in heaven. The universe sustain our daily bread. And as we go to the end of the world, we will serve the most protected house of the heavens. And all you have is God and His salvation. And the Lord is the king of power and the glory of the Lord forever. Amen. I'll give the target.
I'll give the motion up. Ring of the minutes.
Motion was made for the ring of the minutes in a financial report. Seconded. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Public comments. Fire company is going to go first.
We like to, our newest thing that we're going to put on the engine. We've got a, we have a real good ambulance service and we're happy to have the KRS unit out of Glendale. But we want to help too. We're in town. We want to be, if we can be there and help, you know. But we purchased an AED. Everybody familiar with them? But if that one time we could be there, you know, I'm hoping. Our company went and lost since fall. I'd say we're real close to 100% of all our members. CPR, AED, first aid class the other night. Well, everybody showed up. And when they all showed up, that showed me they all want to learn. We just keep it going, you know what I mean? But Dave has it here. It's like a serum.
Is he calling the engine or the brush? Is he using the engine?
Fire company called me up last week to come up to the fire hall to show me what they purchased. I know we use AEDs at work but this one you can even use on infants, which I didn't know you could use on infants.
But they, we paid a little extra for this. This key right here, instead of changing pads for an infant, you just take that key, plug it in there.
And cut some oil.
And that, yeah. Like cuts the powder.
Hold it down.
Yeah. It's pretty basic. It is push the green button. It walks you through everything, you know.
Yeah.
Even though it was an AED. But we're pretty proud of getting out, you know. Like I say, everybody over there scrolled on it and everything. We'd be glad to.
We don't need to use it but if you do need to use it, you have it.
That's the way everything we have over there, you know.
So what the fire company asked me to do was bring it to council to see if we would pay half of what they paid because it's not only going to benefit our community, it's going to benefit the surrounding communities. So I told them to come, need a council meeting, and talk about it.
We're going to buy it no matter what.
Yeah.
We, you know, we look very big. We want to no matter what. But we, we keep on ourselves over there. We keep, you can't stop. Everything keeps changing. We got to keep changing. But one thing that don't change, people keep having heart attacks. And if we can be there one time.
How much was that, chief? How much was that? Sixteen hundred?
Somewhere around, I don't know. Yeah. It's a tough now. Just me, you. He heard you.
That's the one thing since, I have to admit, since Terry took chief back, he and I, I mean, it's almost as scary how we think alike. But we've really made it priority to catch up on equipment, training. I mean, we have training planned on this whole entire year coming up. Hasn't been done for quite a while.
It was $1,697.50.
I'll then make some of that.
Yeah. I don't have a problem with that.
You need a motion?
We don't need a motion.
I motioned.
Okay. Tom made a motion to pay for half the AED.
Can I go to a muster now?
No.
No, you're not allowed. Seconded by Amanda. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
There you go.
You're welcome, chief.
Thank you.
No, thank you guys.
On the other hand, if any one of us, anybody would like to learn on that, get updated, get certified and use it, we'll hook you up.
Yeah, I was wondering about that. I wanted to get recertified.
Yeah. I think Terry Winston might be able to hook you up there, okay? We have EMTs over the hall. They work elsewhere. You know, living in Irvona, you got to.
We're all going to have.
Elsewhere for work.
Yeah, we just got those at work and they're going to commit and we're going to certify us so we, anyone at the shop can use it. Whether it's an employee or a customer.
Kids want to get it together and we can set up a process, okay?
All right.
Thanks. You're welcome, chief.
Thank you, guys.
You're welcome. Well, we inside?
Excuse me. Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I have a moment.
Sure.
Concerns them.
Okay.
Thank you for your service, folks. No criticism. I just, I travel the general that rode up to my house often. The dry hydrant that is there is unusable. It's also on the not current side of the creek. I spoke to Tom Dixon. He said without any problem, he'd sign whatever you needed. But if you could change it to that other side and maybe have some type of a screw where it drops within, down into the water level you need, you could pull it out for ice. Don't worry about high water.
I've seen them on internet. You can actually put it on a bridge and pull it up.
My request is please cook it up before we need it. We've had so many years of below average rainfall. The woods are just a tinderbox. We shouldn't stress the system, the water system anymore if we need to and to go into a reliable hydrant with the mace.
Yeah. And it'd be easier. You could pull it forward and back right in. Yeah. We've also found that you can actually get an engine in there quicker and just without hooking to a hydrant. But that, without hooking to that.
And if you did it the way I'm recommending and all you'd have to do is stop, let someone off, they could fill a couple of your suction hoses off and while he's getting there backing up your pump.
The problem with that, when they put it in there, the borough employees put it in there for us and it kept filling up with debris.
Yeah, yeah. Good intentions but it's the.
You'd have had to get on there. Remember, Mark, you'd have had to get on there every rain, everything that washed down there.
That's, I just come, I wanted to request council that you're here as a boss. Again, thank the guys for your service. Anyway, that was one of the reasons I came and it was actually thank you for the time. Thank you for your thing.
Yeah. Mona, my man. With the new engines now, when they used to use them, the engines were smaller. Now, people's in the places now that engine drowns up out of places you wouldn't even have thought of enough in the 90s, you know. You wouldn't even, but the engines now, they just quick. You laugh at us. We wouldn't hit places years ago. But we ran into this at Jordan Donship. They want to put a draw hydrant up. All we got to do, we went out and checked and one suction, hard suction, we're in, we're in the stream. Man. Anyhow, thanks.
You're welcome.
Do you mind if I say something?
Sure.
Okay, so it's another question. I wrote this just for the fire company and for everyone that kind of bitched in. Yesterday was a three week mark of your attempt to save my father. He was in cardiac arrest and that's why I think that's really important. Your attempts were wavering and unwilling throughout the entire process. God was using each of you as a soldier for my father but sometimes even the strongest army. God, with the strongest army, God has other plans, plans beyond what the strongest army can try on. Arrived at my parents' home, ugh, I'm sorry, pun. Arrived at my parents' home, I had the worst feeling in the pit of my stomach. Unfortunately, this is a sight your company and others see too often. Even one time is too much. With that being said, you're a group of heroes to me. What, with most calls, I'm sure there's a chance that you have to witness and endure the aftermath of a grieving family. To experience that repeatedly is a thought that I can't fathom. I was not present, was informed by my sister that one of the members of the company, and I'm not sure if it was Gordon Irvona, said a prayer with my mother. This is an example of pure compassion and faith. The amount of dignity and respect that was displayed during a scene surpassed anything that my family or I could have expected or asked for. I want to thank all of you guys from the bottom of my heart for what you tried to do and what you did and I'll never forget it. So thanks, everybody.
That means a lot to us.
And if I may, that was me with your mother.
Thank you.
And she definitely needed it and said it for everyone. She was there.
It helped a lot.
I want to thank you for letting me speak. The fire count on Vicki Johnson has gone on way too long. Will be three months with no answers. I sent a right to know paper to the IMA two times. Now with not getting all the responses I asked for. I served on the Irvona Borough Board for many years and it's been a long time and we never ran into this kind of problems. The IMA was given a petition to hire Vicki Bat with close to 400 signatures. It is taking five people to do her job and in the long run, it's going to cost the taxpayers money. A lot of extra money and they still aren't getting the work done. Back to the right to know. These are the questions I asked. Back to the right-to-know, these are the questions I asked. I wanted the last six months of accounts payable, listed the vendors and expenses for the last six months, expense records last six months, including January twenty twenty-four, income for the I.M.A. the last six months, which is my legal right-to-know. I received nothing back from them. The reply I got was, a legal review is needed to determine whether the records are subject to access, and the extent of nature of the request preludes a response within the requirement time period. The right-to-know letter I sent before that was, I would like the last three months of the I.M. meeting minutes, which I did receive. I asked for the proof of bond on new employee secretary, which is my right. I asked for the background check of the new secretary, valid driver's license, proof of secretary's position being advertised three consecutive days, pre-employment physical and drug test, and the new secretary added to the insurance, and a copy of the handbook. The only thing I received was a forty-eight-page copy of the handbook. Everything else was put off. But why are we not getting answers on why this girl was fired? I mean, I'm tired of everybody hiding behind the ethics. Does the new board president of the I.M.A., do you know why she was fired?
I have no idea.
No idea. Dan, do you know why she was fired?
I wasn't. I left that meeting early that night, I do not know why.
My cause, do you know why they were fired? No. So only three people know why she was fired. If they're a board and they're working together with the other two board members, you would think that the five board members would all know why this girl was fired. It has just gone on too long, and it's a shame that we as taxpayers have to put up with this. I mean, you have four hundred signatures, they want her back, we're not getting our bills.
I'm getting estimated bills.
Yeah, I just don't, what's the big secret?
Mona, let me, let me explain something to you. I was called and notified to go to the last I.M.A. meeting with the attorney. The attorney and I asked each other, what are we doing here? What's going on? We both said, we don't know.
And nothing was done.
So, the attorney and I stood out in the hallway for an hour. They called us into the executive session. Their attorney looked at my, our attorney, and said, everything's resolved.
What got resolved?
I don't know, she wouldn't tell me or the attorney. And they said, that attorney said to me, she goes, do you have anything for me? I said, not at this time.
If it was resolved, we know nothing was resolved.
Because me and our attorney weren't allowed in there, and that's the only thing that was said to us. So we sat there for three hours, paid our attorney...
Yeah, can you imagine the journey piece for the I.M.A.?
Then, then our attorney asked me and asked why our secretary was sitting up on that board. And I said, I don't know. Why was she up there, Smitty?
Who's that?
Amber.
So she could take minutes, so we would get correct minutes for the meeting.
Who names that minute?
That's the exact reason she was there. We didn't, we didn't know if, we didn't know if Casey was gonna be there, because she wasn't there at the previous meeting. We wanted to have correct minutes for why, what was going on.
Plus, also the meeting before, they had said about, they had hired Casey as a temporary employee. When they read the minutes that night, it said that they had hired her full-time. Well, if they go back and watch Jerry Spade's thing, it says temporary. And I had brought it right up at the meeting, and they still passed the minutes.
And I have another question, if you don't mind me asking, Mona.
No.
Because I got, I got questions too. How's come our secretary's going down and you ended up taxed for them? I just found that out today.
So you're on taxes too?
She helped him, she showed her how to do it, so it wasn't messed up, but well...
I mean, I'm not putting Amber under the bus.
Yeah.
But if this is a person who was hired to qualify, why is our secretary going down?
No, this isn't part of our meeting. But Tom can tell you that he contacted Casey, and she was supposed to go to Dubler's to see about getting bonded and put on the driver's policy.
And to my knowledge, she did do that, but I don't know if it's been through yet.
But that, that's not part of this meeting, that's part of the I.M.A. meeting.
Yeah.
But really, it is a part of this meeting, because Arbona Borough is the one that elects these officers, and they're not doing their job.
We elect, but we don't govern.
That's right.
It's for us to govern. It's an effusement process that our lawyers, we can't do it, it takes, it'd take months, many months.
So how do we find out what was settled? I mean...
We need to sit down and have a question and answer session, is what we're gonna have to do over at the I.M.A.
Yeah, but they don't answer our questions.
Well, we need to do that. But there only so much can be disclosed because of the pending investigation.
And when is that gonna be over?
We have no idea.
I understand that can take up to a year.
Oh, my gosh.
From my understanding, don't hold me, that's just my understanding.
Jerry gave me a P.A. Governor's Center Local Government Services manual here for municipal secretaries. Dismissal from off, dismissal from office. Now, this is just what I'm reading from this, not saying I agree or disagree with it. Article six, section seven of the Pennsylvania Constitution provides, appointed civil officers may be removed by the power by which they, they shall have been appointed. Such removal may be with cause as well as without notice. That's just a, just a legal statement is all that is. That's for, that's from, that's from Mr. Spade here.
Yes, but that's not what's in the board's workbook.
That doesn't, that doesn't match what's in the employee handbook. I agree with that.
May I ask a question? Is if you considered a civil servant, she's hired, she's a hired employee, not a civil servant.
I'm not a lawyer, I can't tell you.
No, I'm just asking.
I don't, I don't know that.
I'm gonna find out what the difference is, if there is one.
If you were to read on in this, Mr. President, if I may interject, if, if she had a contract, there would be an issue. But without any cause at municipality, I'm trying to stay neutral, but I wanted you to, you wanted an answer, this is the only answer that you're gonna get unless she takes the I.M.A. to, to court, then it would become public. But every one of these board members that are here from I.M.A., they're not allowed to talk about personnel. They can't, they can't give you driver's license, they can't give you anything like that. It's against the law, and they have to keep, they have to keep quiet. Well, you may disagree, but look at the law.
There's no hip involved when it comes to finding out if she had a drug test or bonded.
It, it's the law for personnel, they're not allowed.
So in other words, now that we have three board members that think Vicki did a good job at her job, can these three board members not make a motion to hire Vicki back like those three made a motion to fire?
We probably could.
I think it needs done to show Arbona Borough that you guys care. I mean, because you would not believe the phone calls I get, the messages I get, you know? And they're making me look like the villain because I'm sticking up for what I believe is right. I mean, I'm not here to cut anybody down, but we need answers, and it's only right. I mean, I had to do some serious praying over this because I don't want to defy God's law, and I just don't care for liars.
Hopefully, we can resolve, resolve some, resolve something at our next meeting, which is gonna be, which is gonna be two weeks.
I'll be there, and so will another, a lot of other people.
But we're trying to make headway here, little bit we can do here or there. Can ask Tom, I mean, trying to get everything done legally.
I mean, Cheryl's still in the books over there at I.M.A., she could be over there helping that girl. And I have nothing against Casey, but she knows nothing about running the I.M.A., you know?
I have no idea about anything in that area.
I was hired there in two thousand, two thousand ten, October of two thousand ten. No, I didn't work any last year because Vicki got Dana to come in to help her, because when her and I went on vacation, it was a conflict, we couldn't close the office. So that's when I said to her, if you can get somebody to fill in, you know, go ahead and do it, and I'll back away a little bit. But if she needed me like at the end of the year for stuff, I'd be more than glad to go help her.
Yeah.
But I'm still on the books over at I.M.A. I never resigned.
That's something to take up at our meeting over there.
I brought that up two meetings ago to Mr. Gallagher, and he told me he had mentioned it to the board. Last meeting, he told me to tell Tom, because Tom was in charge now. That's the answer I got from Mr. Gallagher.
That was a dog. Okay, well, hopefully, we can get, we can move forward from this.
I hope so.
It's gonna take a little bit, but hopefully, it's gonna be sooner than later.
It's a real mess.
Yeah. All right, is that all we guys have? Okay. Any more public comments?
Yeah, I have some.
Okay.
At meeting, water meeting, it was brought up that the Carri, you know, Arbona Borough formed the, the water authority, and I have the Articles of Incorporation, where they were incorporated in nineteen forty-five, or nineteen, yeah. And I have the agreement between, I have, if anybody's interested in it, it was signed by Robert Charlie, Wendell Lloyd, Betty Williams, and Ken Newitt. So this, it was not incorporated into, the Carri Township had nothing to do with Arbona Borough. Arbona Borough formed the Water Authority on their own, the Carri Township has nothing in it. They also, when I was sitting on the I.M.A. board, we made a motion that there would be not more than one board member on the Carri Township, only one, not two, three, or four. So that's where they stand. We are not responsible for the Carri Township having two or three board members on there when it's not required, we only need one, because it was done out of the fact that, well, they had, Blaine City, no, yeah, Blaine City and Rosebud on the, on the, on the system. And we thought that was only fair, we had our attorney draw up the papers, where I.M.A. was on the board then, so that is why there's only one board member allowed from the Carri Township.
That, that's why the B.C.I.M.A., when it was formed, is the Carri, Co., Arbona, and each, and each entity, each entity has two members.
No, we have three.
Three members now?
Yeah, because you have to have nine, and I do need some more stuff over there if anybody's interested in service. That's the problem, nobody wants to serve, they want to bitch, but they don't want to go and sit on the board. It is a headache sometimes, but I'll tell you, I've been on there for twenty odd years, and I go to every meeting. I even give up my bowling nights to come here to I.M.A. meetings. I was so dedicated.
When is your meeting over there, Smitty?
When is your meeting over there, Donna?
What?
When is your meeting over there?
Where?
B.C.I.M.A.
It's the third Thursday.
Third Thursday.
Third Thursday. Thinking about going, Tom?
Yeah.
Let's see the score.
No, I don't want to, because it's a new accident. But that was, I didn't have, Donald has the paperwork. I just have this, I have, he's got my paperwork, it'll be at the next, it'll be over there. I'll have to tell him to get it. Oh, and I got a bit of trivia here. In fact, the Borough purchased this slot here in Arbona for two hundred dollars, and on December the twelfth, President of Council Smith, which is, I don't know if he's related to Smitty or not, he was a president of council, I thought that was very interesting, and so I brought this for you, Smitty.
No, thank you.
I have no, I have, I know they give you all these little things, but that's where we're at. The Carri Township had nothing to do with the Water Authority.
That's very interesting, Donna.
I got wrong, I do. If you want any history of Arbona, I take all the minutes from nineteen whatever.
Terry, is that all you have?
Yep.
Okay.
I'm Karen. I have a report for you.
Okay.
You want it now?
We'll do committee for, when we go to committee, public comment.
I have a question.
Okay.
I got nothing in this, except I'm a customer on the system and, and my curiosity. You know, the controversy that was over there is happening still, I got nothing in that either. I don't have a side. What I do have a side about is the continuance of good, quality, safe water force, and that we don't pump out waste like we're doing. With that being said, I have never in my life saw any place that, that, okay, these ruling body made a decision, and before the controversy was resolved, one of the key players was removed, and another, no offense, put in right in the middle of it, it's like, what the hell am I in this about? Why would you remove somebody? What facts did this board have that that reappoint Tim so we could finish out the controversy and then impeach if you didn't like the answer? What facts did you have to make that decision to just hang him out of that when he's the one with the info? Or one of the three that made a vote? All three of them should have come to, come to wrong decisions, enough to warrant facing the communal wrath of a bad decision, if that's what it was. Let them face it out and finish it out. And then if you want to chastise because they did something improper, do it that way. But as Mona said, ninety-two doesn't give you the excuse to be ignorant, Donna. As Mona said, we have the right to know, and I'm going to the meeting so I do know. I don't know what happened. I was under the assumption, the only people that knew what happened were the five on the board, and now I hear that two of the board didn't know. That's not how I understood it. I went to the meetings, I didn't understand it that way.
This, this board simply appoints, we advertise in the paper...
No, no, excuse me.
But we got, we got two names in.
No, I named the I.M.A. board.
That's, yeah, we appoint for the I.M.A. board.
I know that, I'm saying, I don't think you should have interfered until the controversy was settled, you should have been the steering force to make sure that it was.
The term was up. At the end of the day, the term was up. It's just like being an elected official.
I understand that.
When your term is up, your term is up.
He's already got the experience and the time in, and no one fought to criticize him prior to that.
Thank you.
Yeah, you've been on there for a couple of years, and you know everything.
No, I don't know that. I'm not gonna interject.
Tim, can you tell them how you got on the board? And when you turn around and talk to the Carri Township...
That's pretty much, I just wanted to know what facts you...
The Carri Township asked for me to be on that board. Ken Caldwell, it asked.
Not all, but there are only odd one board, one board member from the Carri Township.
That may change.
I want to add one more thing to this comment. I'm a pariah here because of innuendos and lies. I have written proof. Anytime anybody wants to come and see that I wasn't what certain people claimed, I was pushed out so they could come in, but that, I don't even care, I'm retired and doing okay, except health.
I know, I have, I have...
I'm speaking!
I'm the secretary, and I have...
So, I spent time as a grunt, as an operator, I don't mean to be loud, I'm trying to talk over, and I also served three years on the board. There's not one vote, not one action I've ever done that was detrimental to the system or the people want it. I say, we should have let this continue until it played out and then made judgment. The interruption, as Mona said, the four months of improper billing, blah, 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 and, and the leaks not being fixed and stuff, we're all paying for this. But it should have been left to play out, that's what I think. Tim, you want to get, I'll really get the floor up to you on that.
Well, I have much to say, just that I was understood that I was to be reappointed, that's what Dick Youngton had said, but obviously, it doesn't play out that way. But obviously it doesn't play out that way, at least in the middle of the controversy.
You know, at the, uh, till one to ninety-nine, beginning of two thousand, because I was, I, I left here in two thousand, December thirty-first. Bill Lucio Senior, Claire Gathigan, and Tom Gorman, the then Cary Township supervisors, petitioned Borough Council. And it was, as Jerry read it at one meeting, it's, we can have as many people on the IMA as possible. And they did at that time agree that the sixty-plus percent of BCI, I mean, uh, Cary Township users on the IMA system wanted proper ratio representation. That meant, and it was included, I read it, I read it with my own eyes, I saw it. It said, as, uh, Arbona Borough, people on the IMA board, as their terms expire, they get reappointed with the Cary Township supervisors until it becomes a three-two. And then, they said, if no one from Cary Township steps up to serve, then it can be opened to the Arbona Borough. It was very plain, very simple, not a lot of crap to it. It was just, hey, we've got more people paying you, we deserve more voice. That's all it was. It wasn't a pissing contest, excuse me, but, and it had nothing to do with ego or who's where. It had to do with ratio of users. And it was agreed upon by the then Arbona Borough Council. And you, I am sure if you can research, you will find it.
We'll have to look into that.
I have an operations agreement here where IMA, Arbona Municipal Authority went into debt to start that system. And it had nothing to do with Cary Township. They didn't put a penny on it.
Well, that's your opinion, Donna?
No, that's on my, that's on here.
Alright.
It's signed by.
We're gonna move on now.
I thank you for hearing me.
Any other public comments? Okay. Okay. Committee reports up next.
I'm gonna stand up because my voice doesn't carry very well when I'm sitting. But anyway, um, I'm here just to let the council and community members know about our Arbona that are in Memorial. It is in need of some repairs. Our walls are not the way they should be, they need, need work. Um, some of the pavers are sinking around one of the circles there. Um, we have money to fix that from our fundraisers. Um, we are going to be getting an estimate from Tri-County Masonry in the spring here. So I just wanted to make you all aware of that. And we are currently conducting a fundraiser. We're selling chances on a Coleman road trip riddle. So Mom, myself, Marge, and Dick, you know, we have chances if anybody's interested. We plan to draw that at the par show.
How much are your chances?
Three for five, two dollars apiece.
And we can always use the numbers on the water.
Yeah, we can use some friend to, if there's like three or four of us trying to, we're doing it. But it's, you know, it's, we, we're trying to raise the money, keep that coming in so we can keep that near. We like to make some improvements to down the road as well, but right now we just need to maintain what we have. That's all I have.
Okay.
As far as the, if you wanna hear about the heritage, this museum is open to anyone, anytime they wanna see anything. Just let Mom or myself know. She'd be happy to open up.
Thank you. Okay, any other committee reports?
Not really, just working on the audit and applications. And then we're selling eggs for Easter. There's thirty prize eggs and twenty eggs that are duds. And that's all we have going on.
Okay. Okay. Looks like you're up there, Mr. Mayor.
Alright, we took care of the fire company. Is our maintenance gonna hear something?
No, Dave's not here.
Okay. So we, we gotta come up with a plan for that levy this year. Cause I was embarrassed last year because it wasn't done. So I would like for us and Dave to come up with a plan so we can get that, put it to bed. So when the Army Corps of Engineers or DEP comes in, it's not half done, it's fully done. Cause I was embarrassed last year. So that's, that's the only thing I'm concerned about is getting that levy cut, so.
I think it'll be done better this year than it was with a previous employee.
Yeah, because it, you know, Tom asked him, can you get it done? You know, not, not the new maintenance guy, the old one, can you get it done within a week? Oh yeah, I can get it done. Three weeks and it still wasn't fully done.
Yeah.
I know David told me that, uh, his plan right now was to do what has to be done in town, but while on the off days, whenever there really isn't anything that has to be done, he's going to work on the levy all the way through. As well as, he got the tractor running. And with the mower on the back. And he said that will save a lot on, number one, on the ride, the zero turn.
Zero turn.
Plus he'll be able to get into a lot more places with that where he can back it down over and get a lot more of a cut and then keep it cut.
I don't know how much equipment you have, but the school has like a program for their seniors for community service. I don't know if that would be a liability. Yeah. Yeah, if you can get them to volunteer, but.
One done. Have you in the past utilized any of the household prisoners?
We've tried through the past couple of years to get them. What was it, Amber? They only had one trustee to send out. I mean, we even asked from the, the county prison. And then they had that escape, that escapee go, so they locked everything down. But yeah, we were trying to use the, what, the resources we could.
I used them three times when I was with the water. I was pleased every time I got so much work out.
Yeah, last year, I think they only had one trustee on the work program.
Yeah, I wanted one, I wanted trustee. What about tomorrow's hope? Well, the thing about the prisoners, in case these people don't know it, they're not violent criminals.
They're on their way out.
Yeah, they're, you know, and if they come out of work, every day they come out of work and go back with a good report, it knocks a little bit more off. So they have good incentive to stay like they're supposed to.
We did talk about the par soap last year, but it never went anywhere. There's no one ever, no one ever got back to us, right?
I know Rich Metzger really good. I'll give him a call. I'm off tomorrow. I'll give him a call. And then see, here's the deal with that, you know, you go to tomorrow, you go tomorrow's hope, then you got some residents sitting there saying, well, why did he get tomorrow's hope? I don't trust the people in the community. And you know, what if they break into my house? So it's, it's a win-win, I mean, it's a win-lose situation.
Them guys don't wanna work anymore.
Really? Well, I'll call Rich Metzger tomorrow and see what goes on from there, so.
Even if you go over to the school and let the seniors know.
Okay.
You know, they, they, they have to have community service, you know, to graduate. They have to serve their community.
Yeah, I thought it was like ten hours or something.
Yeah, and it doesn't even have seniors.
What is it, ten hours?
Now, what, thing is, with the Borough Insurance Policy, cover someone that's a minor.
Well, that's what I was gonna say. Probably be up to over eighteen probably.
Yeah, remember we got that volunteer, that waiver from the attorney? And I'm pretty sure it says on it about kids.
Oh, does?
Yeah, I'll have to get a copy of it out.
I just wanna get that levy put to bed before, you know, and cut.
Yeah, for the last minute, we can't get it done then.
Yeah. Cause like I said, I was embarrassed last year.
I'm gonna be DEP this year, according to those gentlemen that were here from engineers. They alternate.
Yeah, they alternate years. Yeah, chief?
Yeah, while you're on that discussing, we're gonna be, Mark brought up to me, I asked him where the, uh, their generator was. Generator on wheels. That come from forestry. That, when it comes to an audit every three years, I gotta show where them all are. There's a big broom.
Yeah, it's down here.
We're sweeping the roads. Couple of containers down at the park. A big pump was on wheels. But somewhere along the line, that generator, Mark asked us to use the haul for it, and so did you join with the powder and all.
Mm-hmm.
Well, they took the Borough Board of the Generator one time. PJ, you know, they had to come over and get it. Well, after that, we never seen it. Now I found out Water Authority had it over there. And then they couldn't decide which one they owned. Well, it don't matter who owns it. I had to show where that come, you know, where it's at.
Well, it's on loan, you use a captive base of car companies.
But, uh, if you want us to light up the building over there, we're gonna have to have it over there.
Yeah.
It does run. We got it running. Uh, the only thing I was told after we got it running that, while it ran, but whenever they would hit the power, power to the building, it would knock the breaker out of the generator. It would trip the breaker. Now, I don't know, that's just what was told to me.
That's all on a separate circuit.
But I know, well, he said whenever it would draw the power, it would trip the breaker in the generator. I know it runs now. It runs very well. Whether the generator part of it, maybe the fields are just dirty. I mean, that might be, but I don't know how.
Where is it right now?
It's with the Water Authority. I do believe, Dan, was it tarped or anything?
It will be tomorrow.
Okay. Uh, but like I said, we got it, Daniel and Bert, they said that they had it over there. They called me, I went over, I talked them through a few things, and it fired, we got the fire rate up. And, uh, we ran one dent off of it.
Yeah.
Uh, but that's all we could test right there, you know.
Yeah. Well, you do, you do need it, not just for in the winter months.
Right.
Hard as well, and you have to keep people cool.
Right.
You have to, you know, you have to run air conditioning. Yeah, I, we need to know what's going on with that.
Right.
When you guys call me late at night and say, hey, you right. No, we're not ready. You took our generator, you know.
Right.
You want that back, chief?
I'd like to have access to it when we need it, that's what I'd like. You know what I mean? When you, when you ask me, John, to have the all ready, I'd like to be able to tell you, yes.
What do you use it for over at the IMA? Did Kate's fire is out?
No, nothing.
Was it over there?
Yeah. Cause my understanding that the IMA ain't for it now.
Ain't the forestry?
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, I, I get audited every three years. It's over there. I'm working, I have to make a show for us though. Yeah. Bring it over.
That's just like the park down here. Things change hands all the time and, you know, you install.
Yeah.
Where do you think would be a good place to keep it there?
I don't know, Joe. Joe doesn't like it sitting over there. Where we have.
Hookup, is it?
Yeah, that's right. The hookup, it has to plug in the one on the, on Dickie's side, but.
Right.
Is it in there? Yeah, the hookup's there. It's still there? Yeah. We'd just like, we'd just like to have access to it when you want us.
If you don't have a place to store, you're, you're alright with it still being over at the IMA? You don't have a place to keep it, you're, you're alright keeping it there.
Sure.
You're, you're just gonna need access to it when you need it, so.
Can't, can't be locked in the gate or anything like that.
Well, we can get, we can get in the gate if we have to.
Oh, you might.
Yeah, we can call it around short.
Okay.
And on that note, before we move on, you have the evacuation plan updated?
Yeah, I just did it here at the end of last year, wasn't it?
Okay, cause they're gonna ask to review it.
Yeah, cause she, cause remember they had asked about it, I did it. And, uh, she sent, sent it over to them and.
Okay.
I never heard anything more, so I'm assuming they approved it.
Okay.
Okay. Is that all you have?
That's it.
Maintenance.
I don't have anything for Daisy.
No, no skid steer or?
Oh, yes, I lied. Skid steer. Um, there is, he got a quote on it. It was six thousand, not six thousand, sixty thousand dollars for a new skid steer.
And they were only willing to give us eight dollars.
Yeah.
And if you got out for bid and you'll get more than that, I guarantee it.
Yeah. If we're, if we're gonna do that, shouldn't we go through, shouldn't we just go through Co-Stars and see what we can get that way? Like we did the Borough Truck?
Good.
Just to see what they can, what other dealers are willing to offer as opposed to just going and getting the Caterpillar?
Right, right, I agree.
Yeah, I think since, it's gonna be over the limits and we're gonna have to take bids on it anyway.
Right.
We might as well just go that route as opposed to, we just can't jump on this bid.
Right.
This quote, so. That's a lot of money for a skid steer.
Now, believe it or not, I hate to say it, but that's what they're running.
Is that, is that what he wants? Have you talked to, like, is that what he?
Dave?
Yeah.
He says parts are getting hard to get for that case.
Okay.
It's starting to get hard to get, and, uh, there are electrical problems. He's trying, he needs, he needs to get it outside on a nice day and get the cab lifted. Cause, uh, the previous employee had the cab up and took, you have to unbolt the, um, electrical box so the cab will lift. And all the hardware's missing. So it's just in there bouncing around. It, oh, you're plowing the roads, you know, whatever you're doing, it's banging around. And the relays are working their way out of the box, and the box is getting worn.
It's an O-four. It only has about three thousand hours on it, but.
Every hour, that's, that's pretty much plowing. Not hard hours, but still it's bouncing around.
Exactly.
So, yeah, if we can put that up to Co-Stars, just to see what we can get.
Okay.
Whatever that takes to do. Correspondence.
I don't have any.
Part-time worker?
Um, I got an application from, I don't know if he's still here, Jaden.
I'm still here.
Oh, sorry, yes. I got an application from Jaden for, he wants to be a part-time worker for maintenance. Can you introduce yourself?
Hi, I'm Jaden. I'm actually the captain of these fine fellows right here over here to run a fire, kick the fire. Um, reason I'm looking for something close to home is because I have my two daughters. I used to be a journeyman with my father-in-law, uh, doing fiber optic construction, outside plant fiber optic construction. And the work in Florida has completely dried up. Even after all the storms and everything, it, it's, it's just dried up. And one of the things I was talking about was with IMA or with the Borough itself. Cause I dedicate my time. These two can vouch for me and Mr. Mayor as well can vouch for us. And forgive me, I forgot, Mr. Kramer, your last name, can vouch. I'm betting he did to this community. I, what I lack in knowledge, I learn, I make up with and the ability to learn very quick. And with having two daughters and a wife, I have to provide.
Did you submit a resume?
Yeah, application.
I have an application. I do have a resume that I can submit if needed, um.
Do you have any experience running a plow truck or a skid steer?
Uh, no, sir.
Okay.
I do not. But again, very quick learner. Um, in fact, I actually had to use, we used to run inside cabling.
Yeah.
For fiber optic. And we'd have to go through the joists on the roof. And I had to use one of those lifts with the two-man buckets.
Yeah.
On the wheel. Took a little bit, but I got it done.
Okay.
Well.
He's also fire fighter one. That's pretty high on the fire service. That'd be, be nice to keep them on.
Yeah.
Keep them around.
And also working on fire two as well, which is the highest that you can get in mental health.
Okay.
Cause for me, it's, it's not just about my job, it's for everyone.
Yeah.
We're going into the second session anyway.
Yeah, we'll, we'll discuss that then. You don't wanna make a decision just right now on the spot, but.
That's fine. I, like I said, I have also put in for IMA as well, so no rush.
That's all you have for part-time?
Yeah.
Okay. New business.
Ready for the audit.
Ready for the audit, I got everything out for Sandy, so, yeah, that's about all I have. I've been busy all month doing reports and the W2s and taxes, and everything else that comes along with the job, so.
Okay.
Smithy?
Yes, Tom?
I was talking to the game commission today about the, the right-of-way. They want us to adopt that road.
Adopt the road?
Yeah, the Swank Town Road, over there.
The one past Chippy's house?
Yeah, like I, we already own it though, but.
Yeah, we have the right-of-way.
Yeah, basically, they want to give it to us so we can get a right-of-way to get the water line through there.
Okay.
There's a lot of muddy water with the deeds and everything like that, so, I don't know if that has to be done here in the new business, or.
We probably have to run it through the solicitor.
Okay.
For sure, before we make any legal decision on that.
Okay.
But yeah, do that, and have Amber call, and, I mean, we could have a special meeting just to approve that if it's, if it's clean to go, just let the solicitor have the contact from the game commission, that way.
Basically, what, what.
Because they don't, they don't want anything from us now, they just want to.
Yeah, they, they want right-of-way over here on.
We're not giving them that right-of-way, that's not even us, that's the other, that's the, that's the one.
Yeah, that's the IMA, I'm sorry. But over here, you know, they wanted to, basically, we take ownership.
They're just gonna take ownership of that, that one, we have to maintain it.
We maintain it anyhow.
Yes.
So that's what I told them.
Yeah, that, that shouldn't be a problem.
That's what I told them, I don't think it's gonna.
You just need to run it through the solicitor to make sure it's all right. Yeah, that should be fine, we don't need a motion for that. Okay, nothing else? Okay, we're gonna go into an executive session, and we're gonna go, we're gonna adjourn right after.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I thought I was on the agenda.
Oh, I thought you already, what the, what the paper, go ahead, go ahead, Jerry.
First thing that I'd like to address if I may, you had a tax collector, I believe for 33 years, and I want to really sincerely, and I tried to think of all the superlatives that I could think of, to thank you, counsel, for what you did for her. This counsel is phenomenal, in my opinion. What you did for her, I was there at the, at that convention, and you paid her way. I think that's commendable, and I don't know how else to thank you, but that was great. And 33 years, is that how many years she was your tax collector? She was faithful as long as I can remember. Thank you for the privilege to state that. The IMA said that the pipe that was put in, was not put in by them at Hocken Street. This is my survey, I know this was an issue, and here's Hemlock Street. Nobody ever asked me to, to do it, and it's a nice job, I'm not complaining about that. But the court hearing for, they were gonna take my ground here. And so, I would like to have a motion that you finish that pipe so I can traverse this area. I actually, this is still a pending issue, but when I bought the railroad, this is what I bought, and these are the railroad maps that they gave me, so I know there was an issue last meeting. So all that was sold, all this and that. There are monuments right here, here, and my deed says that I bound North Whitmer and South Whitmer, and that's on my deed, and my surveyor surveyed that, and actually, this shouldn't be taken out, but Kalavaki, who was the attorney for the other one, none of the people that were in the litigation had a title. The judge actually asked, Lucas says, "Do you have title to that property?" And Mr. Marshall stood up in the court hearing, "You don't have to take my word, right here's the transcript." Stood up and said, "No, we're gonna take it by adverse possession." And the judge, I was sitting on the stand, and the judge went like that, he said, "You cannot adverse possess against a PUC entity, blocks law says you cannot. I outright bought it." Then we found out in, in the title that there was a reverter clause. So then I found the original property owners and bought it from Whitmer Land and Coal. I lost this case because my surveyor had a heart attack. He couldn't remember if he did an abstract. It was on the bills, it was everything, but because I couldn't prove, which my attorney was, was not the right attorney, don't ever get a tax attorney when you're doing real estate. He should have done an ejectment, or not an ejectment action, that's what this action was, should be quiet title, and that's what I'm gonna be doing, is a quiet title on this property, because I have two deeds for the property. And what I'm here to ask you for a motion is to finish that pipe, if you would, please.
You shouldn't need a motion to run that pipe across, because that, that pipe dead-ends now, right, Jerry, and it's just coming on your property.
Right in the middle of my property.
And he's taking it over for.
Yeah, and then on up here by the warfields, they have the problem of water coming down the hill, and it goes to a spot here, and then you, at one time, you dug a ditch across and put a pipe across, it dead-ends, it doesn't go anywhere.
It doesn't drain, then.
My resolve of that would be very easy, to go from that source of water, down that side of the road to that, and then out that pipe. And the longer you make that pipe, the more able, be able to take, that's my argument. I yield back the floor, thank you for what you've done for Nyla Henry, I think that was wonderful what you did for her. I never dreamed that she would die that quick.
Has Dave Queen been over to look at that ditch yet or not, that pipe?
Nobody's contacted me.
Okay, wow, should have Dave.
We probably should put that to bed, I know.
Yeah.
He's brought that up a couple of times.
Yeah, well, there's, there's no reason we shouldn't do it.
No.
Because we know, we know there's a drainage problem, Kara knows there's a drainage problem.
It wasn't a drainage problem until Jerry hovered over and it went out to the creek.
Let's fix both of those, put it to bed before it's ready to get through, that way it's.
We don't need a motion for that.
Thank you for the time.
Now, we'll just, we'll just get Dave on that, and we'll, we'll get that old, you know, pipe, one pipe put in, and then extend the other one, and that way, the water will drain and we off your property, and it'll clear the other side of the road too.
Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome. All right.
You're going to the executive session?
Executive session now, we're gonna adjourn right after.
You gotta use the water truck, you know, maybe?
I don't know, I'm going to get the minutes up for that, I'm seeing it on his first name. If he knew what that was, like, last year would have been, I was gonna bring it up last year.
Hey, Derek, thanks for the.
Thank you.
Yeah, I can do that, it's, because I mean, maybe a relative.
Yeah.
I'm so proud of you, I, I'm trying to think.
I'm like sitting here, like, I'm like.
Sometimes it doesn't feel like a promoted job, take you for it. I know our executives, I do that much. I would, I would buy a, so that nothing can happen like that in a minute.